Hey, Mayor, I think we're up.
Yeah. Okay, welcome back. We're continuing with the workshop of October 3rd, 2022. Next on the agenda, we're going to talk about the City Council retreat. I'll turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So in the, your last retreat was November 8th, 2021. We talked about the development of the council vision, the goals for your term. But at that retreat, you also talked about wanting to hold additional retreats. And so my thought was that we should probably plan for an upcoming retreat, opportunity for you to kind of review the goals, any adjustments you might want to make, but really spend more time talking about what, you know, your agenda for the upcoming year. You have one more year of this term. What would you like for us to be working on? What, talk to us about other retreats. So if you want to meet more frequently, I think that's one of the comments that came out of the last retreat was being able to meet like that more frequently. But what I need tonight is just, one, are you interested in doing it? Two, when would you like to hold the retreat? And then where would you like it to be held? And then your topics for the agenda, if you have some thoughts on that.
I'd like to suggest, again, the calendar. If you all want to do a retreat, I'd recommend a December 12th date, which is a Monday. And we could probably do it offsite. It will be public. All of our retreats are always public. Then find a site, i.e. maybe Gippers in the room or something with plenty of room for us. We can have some dinner, talk. It's getting close to the holidays, and we can have a retreat there. And have plenty of room for the public if they want to watch.
That is like the one date that I can't do. So be it.
First of all, do you guys want to do another retreat? It is about one year, okay? And we do have a series of goals. I think it would be good to kind of recalibrate what we've done already to achieve these goals, what the results are, and then looking back to see if we need to adjust, be dynamic, revise, you know, revisit some of these. So quick straw count. Everybody in favor of hosting a retreat, or doing a retreat, or retreating? Yeah, okay. So we're good there. That's one down. Now, dates. Do we want to do it onsite, City Hall, or do we want to do it offsite in Auburn at a third party?
We spend a lot of time here at City Hall. It would be nice to find a venue out in the community. Maybe we could support a local business in the process.
Everybody good with that? Jordy? Yeah, okay. Date. I throw out December 12th. That seems to be the one day in 2022 that Dana has plans. You never make plans on a Monday. I don't want to get, I don't want to get in the middle of your social life, Dana.
Um, yeah, okay.
Tuesday, the 13th of December is a planning board meeting? Is that the second Tuesday of the month for planning board? Or the?
What?
I'd probably go five to eight.
Look, what I meant to say was that week, but.
You have Monday, the 14th of November.
Do it earlier. Thanksgiving's on the 24th. Monday, the 19th of November, 14th? Oh, instead of, well, yeah, yeah, November 14th, week before Thanksgiving.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Let's do it then. No objection?
I will be out of state on business that week.
28th?
Why don't we do November 22nd? It's a Tuesday. Probably not going to get a day where everybody is here unless we do it.
Mayor, can I just work a minute out? Probably push a doodle poll out for everybody, and I'll have a bunch of dates, and then majority wins. Are we good with that?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make sure that gets out. Agenda items?
I, my personal recommendation is that we just review each one of these and make amendments if we need to then, unless there's something new that needs to be added.
Some action steps. Okay.
I'd like to see directly talking about our communication strategy.
So we could review our communication plan.
Yeah, I'd be interested in discussing that.
I like that idea.
And if we don't think of anything, you just send an email out to the group, or to the city manager or myself before the end of next week. Fair enough. Okay. Okay, I think we're in.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the next agenda item. I'm going to turn it back to the city manager again. We're going to talk about the pre-approved ready-to-build housing RFP. This is in reference to last meeting in the memorandum utilizing ARPA funds and a mayor's ad hoc committee tasked with kind of looking at the aesthetic of different housing types or archetypes within neighborhoods, specifically those for owner occupied, and really talking about, you know, currently non-conforming lots and what could happen when they're conforming, row homes, carriage houses, or backyard ADUs and so forth.
Thank you, Mayor. So your last meeting on September 19th was directing city manager to draft this RFP. Staff worked on this. It also included budgeting for the firm. What I'm going to recommend is that we'll come back before you for the budget after the RFP. So we scoped out what the RFP will look, RFP will look like. A timeline has been built in here as well, so you can see just how quick we are moving on this. We're certainly going to exceed, I think, the, it was 60 days, I think, is, is what you had given us. But we'll be prepared to push this out with a due date of the RFP by coming back to us by November 10th, and, and then having some completed deliverables by February 28th, 2023. The work group will be working on that, that's formulated, and to ensure, working with the firm to ensure that the design aesthetics, look of these plans will meet the needs in those different neighborhoods. So they'll, they'll be working on that together as a group to come back with that recommendation. So any questions about the RFP? I think, you know, staff really looked to see if there's anyone else there, else, out there that had done an RFP like this. They did not see that. But there are communities out there that are doing this, just not through, South Bend being one of them, taking a look at what South Bend has done. So a lot of the, what we put into the RFP came from South Bend. So if you were to look at South Bend's website, you'd be able to see much of what we're talking about right now.
Quick question on the, the language in the RFP. It looked good, except it was using the term bids and bidders, and it's qualifications-based selection, and architects and engineers get huffy about that when you use the term bid. So if it could be proposals, just a sort of a stylistic comment, that's all.
Yeah. So the one thing I was kind of taking a look at here is the, the scope of work, where we're actually prescribing the types of housing that we're looking for contractual services on. And so I read this book a while back called Missing Middle Housing, and it discussed lots of, lots of options in between a triplex and an apartment complex. And, and typically what an apartment complex is considered is like a 12-unit design. So when I look at that, that scope of work, that six-unit design, to me, I'd like that to be a little bit more of a, a specific ask. And, and what I look at is, is something called a bungalow court, which is, if you look it up, it's, it's really, it's kind of like three condominiums. It's, it's two rows of three condominiums. And you have like a court in the middle of it, like a court, a court, a courtyard. So you get, it's like, I don't know, we don't have anything like it in Auburn right now. But you get, you get three little condos on each side, and you get a little courtyard in the middle with a little bit of a green area. And I think the look is really nice. But that's, that's the type of thing I'd like to see for a six unit.
If, and if I could, I just want to, as you all are talking about this, if you look back at the memorandum, the, first of all, staff did a great job on this. I mean, they really took this kind of from a concept and expanded greatly. But the intent was always to provide missing middle housing types that were predominantly owner occupied or adjacent to, in the case of a carriage house or an ADU. I would like to recommend that council think about eliminating a six-unit design package and the 12-unit design package, because they're in the commercial sector versus the owner occupied. And, you know, God love anybody who wants to be owner occupied and build a six unit and live in it. I, I think it's rare, theoretical, but it's rare. But I think that what we do is, by carving those two out, we literally talk about an added, that's point number seven, for lack of a better term, architect's choice, missing middle concept. So instead of fencing them in, part of the design element and the mayor's ad hoc can talk about these. And that way, there's some flexibility, but, you know, no greater than a four-unit architectural choice, if you would play. Does that make sense? Almost like giving a little bit of variety, but still keeping it within the intent, and letting the mayor's ad hoc come up with it, because I love the courtyard look. There's also a few others, too, okay, so that they could come out with, and the architect might have some great examples as well. Is the council okay with that? Eliminating two and adding one? Eliminating the six and 12 unit design?
Yeah, I think that's.
And then adding an architect's choice?
I think that's great. I think the, we've got plenty of these 12 units. People know what they look like. I don't think that it's going to come up that different.
And the design, again, the intent was for these plans to be free for people that are building in order to create generational wealth and provide units for themselves and others. That's always small. No, it's not six and 12. But I applaud staff for thinking it forward and wanting that design aesthetic. And maybe that can come later in the winter when this project is done.
Okay. All right.
Hey, nothing else? Mr. Manager, you have any questions with the council?
I'm all set. We can move forward with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. An aggressive timeframe. So, you know, I think we'll have a little bit of flexibility on that, though, on the backend in February. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is economic development pursuant to one, excuse me, an executive session for an economic development matter pursuant to one MRSA, section 405-6C.
So moved.
Counselor Milk, so I have a second.
Second.
Second for Counselor Gary. All those in favor? We're now in executive session. Thank you.
Just to let everybody know that we left our item Agenda D, which was an executive session with economic development, halfway finished, and we have yet to conclude or start our workshop E, which is another executive session. After this meeting is complete, we will then resume D and then go into E on the agenda tonight. We have one consent item on the agenda tonight, and I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilor Staples and a second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Passes seven zero. Next of the minutes is the September 19th, 2022 regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections? None being asked for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Gary and a second by Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Passes seven zero. We're going to move on to communications. There's several items on the communications list. One's a resolution from Lake Auburn Watershed Protection. I'll let you read that if you haven't. The second one is an education presentation on T 4.2B. That's staff. Mr. Manager, did you want to provide those dates?
Thank you, Mayor. As you see in the packet, John Blay, our Deputy Director of Planning and Permitting, provided you with an education presentation schedule. As you see highlighted, there'll be a virtual education meeting on October 19th at 6:00 PM and then an in-person meeting scheduled on October 25th at 6:00 PM. Here, we're looking at an alternate location than here at Auburn Hall. Currently, we're looking at the Fairview School as an option. We'll be putting out a couple of public notices on those two meetings as well as doing our PR outreach on Facebook. And we'll be putting out some weekly information regarding T 4.2B out through social media as well as reminders of the meetings. I think that's how you were directed staff to put that together. I can certainly answer any questions you might have.
None being, we'll keep on with communications. Council Communications is next. I'm going to start off. I handed everybody a memo, I believe Sue has one too. And if we can, I don't think it's electronic. But this is just for your information. I'll go over it briefly because it talks about three American Recovery Plan expenditures. So in order to continue to further build upon our goals of rebuilding resilient neighborhoods and in light of recent studies and initiatives done by other municipalities around the country, I would like to propose the following three expenditures for future action and consideration. One is increasing the funding of our highly successful Sustainable Auburn Energy Efficiency Program by $200,000. Based on current use rates, this should help approximately 200 additional property owners increase the efficiency of their home and hence reduce operating costs. Additional 200, excuse me, a new $200,000 facade improvement fund focused on homeowners making less than 120% of the areas' median income. The purpose of this grant will be to provide either a grant or forgivable loan equal to the cost not to exceed $5,000 for replacement of porches, windows, siding, roofs, minimum amount of property owner's assistance would be around 40. So in summary, basically a grant program allowing people to get new windows, roofs, sidings, hopefully in conjunction with a lie-heap weatherization program and a weatherization audit in order to lower ongoing operating costs. Third is $150,000 allotted to a neighborhood quarter store grant or forgivable loan program for the establishment or expansion of essential corner stores that have most of their revenue derived from food sales. This program aligns with national efforts to enhance healthy food choices while capability access to further the goals of creating complete neighborhoods and satisfying a recent L.A. Good Food Council goal of creating healthy corner stores in urban areas. Maximum amount per recipient, $30,000. For more information, please go to HealthyCornerStores.org or you can look at the strategic plan on Good Food Council of L.A.'s website, So while the above plan is by no means exhaustive, these three expenditures, I'm going to keep moving the ball down the road as we get closer to the May deadline of next year. Where all funds for our ARPA allocation has to be encumbered, but not necessarily spent. Building off successes and just using this as a conversation starter that we can really talk about during our next meeting and make action. Very similar to what we did with the ADU program. Let staff go through this, troubleshoot it, make sure it's applicable, look for any types of ways to enhance it, find matching funds and so forth, and actually further some of our goals that are outlined in our strategic plan, numerous comprehensive plans as well as our own council initiatives and goals. Okay? Are there any questions on this? Of course, it's not, it's just direction, not action yet. And of course, we can tweak this and work this throughout the workshop and council order process. Okay? That's it for communication on my end. Councilors, anybody have any communication about the city? None being, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have several items. One would be, I have spoken with several community members regarding our communication out to the public and how can we enhance that and work that we could do relating to that. The first one would be the newsletter format. Hopefully, people have seen the change in our newsletter format. Before, that was just a real text type of communication. We're now using a platform that allows us to push that out into a better-looking newsletter and hopefully that'll be something that we can continue to communicate with. If people are not aware of that, I encourage you to go to our website, sign up for the Alert Me, and then you have several options when you look to sign in for Alert Me on the different various topics you'd like to be alerted on. We are going through, we knew we had some glitches with some emails that were not working properly. That's being worked on and being taken care of. Second one is that in the last few weeks, the police department has been pushing out their crime stats. That's a weekly notification of crime stats that are taking place. That's also coming out through Alert Me. It's something that people could sign up for and get that information. We will be closed on October 10th for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and so Auburn Hall will not be open that day. The last item I have is regarding the Christmas Village at Festival Plaza. To date, we have received over 150 applications for access to, from vendors, for access to the Christmas Village. Those villages will rotate vendors. Right now, it's looking like about 18 vendors will be chosen out of that 150. That will be operational throughout the month of December. There'll be also coffee, hot chocolate, music. Our Christmas tree will be lit through that time as well. So that is really shaping up, but just the amount of interest that we've received on the Christmas Village and opportunity for vendors is going to bring a great deal of people hopefully out to Festival Plaza, utilize that space. And it will be great for especially some of our small businesses or small entrepreneurs that are looking for a space to be able to either launch their business or expand on their existing business platform that they have. So that is turning out to be very successful. We're looking forward to that. Staff's doing a great job communicating with those applicants. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Walker?
Thank you. I just want to announce that the age-friendly will be putting on a Bean Supper at the community center down at Pettingill Park. This is going to happen Saturday, October 15th. The time will be four to 5:30. We do not charge for these dinners there. We put them on. All we ask is if you can give us a donation. It will help to put on the next one that we do at some time in the later future. It'll be beans, of course, red hot dogs, bread, coleslaw, and we'll definitely have some desserts to give out with also water. We ask that you call 333-6601, extension 2108. You will reach Jamie at the senior center. And please give her the time that you would like to be there between four and 5:30. We ask that so we have some type of a number of how many people may be showing up. Right now, I think we've got around 50 people signed up. I think you'll have a lot of fun. It'll be great food, and we enjoy doing it. So mark your calendar, October 15th down at Pettingill Park. Also, the United New Auburn Association will be putting on its Halloween party again this year for the kids. We will do it at Anniversary Park. It'll be on Sunday, October 30th. Now, that's not Halloween Day, that's the day before, so don't get it confused. Come and see us during the day. It will be from 1:00 to 3:00, and we'll have plenty of candy to give out. All the little stores and neighborhood people help us out. There'll be lots of candy for all the kids there, and we do not take responsibility for dentist costs. Anyways, come and have a good time with us there. Ken Blaze and myself, we put this on every year, and we have anywhere from 400 to 600 kids show up that day, and it's a great time. We have games and a lot of other things, but most of all, we trick-or-treat the kids with plenty of candy. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open this up to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. If you would, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address. And if you could, limit your comments to approximately three minutes.
My name is Ben Lounsbury, and I'd like to ask why under communications, presentations, and recognitions, the first element was glossed over and no details were given. Communication on Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission Resolution. Can you do that for me now?
That's normally our process. This is in the agenda since Thursday and the packet.
It's in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, as long as I'm up here, I'll continue. I hope my three minutes starts now and not before that. I am concerned that Auburn's Office of Planning and Permitting will be overloaded with enforcement responsibilities if the degree of development suggested by the administration is fulfilled. I am a resident of West Auburn. I have been following the situation of a horse farm in our neighborhood. At a public meeting about a year ago, Auburn's planning board put requirements into the farm's development permit to satisfy its own concerns and those of the neighbors, the public, and the environment. The farm has failed for many months to satisfy the terms of the permit. I personally sent a letter of complaint to the Office of Planning and Permitting on March 24th this year. After all these months, the farm is still not in compliance with its permit. The abutting neighbor is, one abutting neighbor is aware of many violations of the permit and has reported them to the Office of Planning and Permitting many times, but very little has changed and new violations have occurred. If Auburn's Office of Planning and Permitting cannot properly handle a relatively small development such as the horse farm, how can it be expected to handle properly the large load of development that the administration is pushing?
Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road. In the budget, I would really like to have it broken out on how much the City of Auburn has used in taxpayer money for the lawyer for the litigation with Lewiston and in other things, for example, right, making sure that you let everybody know that it was okay for you to vote on something the planning board hadn't even discussed yet. I would really be interested because, you know, it's like you're fighting the people of Auburn, and I'd like to know how much we're paying the lawyer to do that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else with us for a second session? None being, I'll close it. We'll be moving on to unfinished business. Next is Order 125-09062022, allocating $1.5 million in ARPA funding for home relief. This item was presented at the September 6th meeting and postponed to tonight in order for further information to be gathered by the city manager, which is in your packet. We'll get to that in a minute, but do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Walker. Okay? I'll open this up to the public for comment, and as public is maybe thinking about this, staff did come back with a recommendation based upon our recommendation or our talk to limit this to individuals over 65 years of old that have age, that have homes to exemption, basically with a maximum potential allocation of $700,000 versus 1.5, but still ensuring the $300 per resident. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? None being, I'll bring it right to the council. Council? Comments, discussion, debate? I mean, the numbers are fairly...
Question, I mean, the order says 1.5, but we're changing it to 700,000. So should we change that order? I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, that's the problem. Since the initial order was for 1.5, it was tabled. We'd have to make a motion to amend this to the new adjusted amount of $700,000. I don't believe we need any further clarification within the order at this point because it's within the staff memo, so yes.
I'd make that motion to amend to 700,000.
I have a motion on the floor to amend to 1.5 down to 700,000 with the terms and conditions outlined within the staff memorandum. And I got a second from Councilor Walker, first from Councilor Whiting. Debate on the motion to amend. None being asked for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend? The order now stands amended. Going back to the initial order that is on the floor right now. Is there any debate on this initial order now amended? None being asked for, comment?
Just a quick comment. So I've heard from some constituents that, you know, this would be a great opportunity for them to help pay their taxes, but they feel that it's coming at a bad time, and they feel that it could potentially be reallocated to something different. And we've heard multiple, or I And we've heard multiple, or I've heard personally multiple things that it could go to, whether it be through, you know, more community development or what have you. For that reason, I'm not in favor of supporting this because I have heard from a significant amount of people that, you know, the $300 isn't really going to be that beneficial to them right now, and if we possibly could find another solution to put that, those funds, I would like to do that.
Counselor Moore?
I had some of the same concerns as Counselor Hawes, and I requested that this money be a little more targeted, so I'm pleased that it is for people over the age of 65. I know there are people under that age that would benefit from this, but I'm sensitive to the people that are on fixed income, so I like the fact that only a portion of those funds are allocated and they're a little more targeted. So a portion of those funds can be reallocated, but I do feel strongly, talking to constituents and from recommendations from my peers here on the council, that I think the targeted 65 and over are people that truly would benefit from these funds.
So any other comments or not? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote. I'll be, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote at this time then. I'm sorry, Counselor Walker, did you?
Well, I was just going to say, I have heard from many people that the $300 is really, is going to help them. No matter how we look at it, it's going to help them. It's not something that, that is going to go to waste in any way. I think there's still money in the ARPA part there if somebody wants to come up with another idea. I think we welcome it, and I think this one has been bounced around long enough, so we need to move it forward and let these people know that, you know, we're serious about helping them in some way.
Counselor Staples?
Yeah, so I noticed in the, in the information here in the order, it says that the deadline to apply would be February 1st. Assuming that we don't use 700,000, we have the ability to reallocate those funds for something else after February 1st.
Yes, yes, and that, just as a reminder, everything that we have allocated and will continue to allocate, if those funds are unexpended, then we'll have to come back here for further allocation. Okay? So, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
No.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of 5-2. Next is Ordinance 21-0912022, amending the general assistance maximum of penances. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gary, I got a second for Counselor Whiting. I'll open this up to the public for com, public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Again, second reading. None being, bring it back to the council. Council, any further comment? Debate? None being, I'll ask for another roll call vote, please.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Yes, passes by a vote of 7-0. Next is Ordinance 22-1003022, amending Chapter 14, Section 14-49, exemptions from license requirements or fees of the city code, otherwise known as the Moran Bill. This is a public hearing and first reading. Just for, if there's anybody, oh, excuse me, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion from Counselor Walker, a second one from Counselor Gary. Okay, open this up to the public. Public, this is waiving permitting fees for all those young 14 and under entrepreneurs for lemonade stands and such, centuries. Bring it back, nobody wants to speak negatively about young children? Counsel, how about you? No, no negative thoughts about young entrepreneurs? Sounds great. I'm going to ask for a vote at this time. This is going to be a roll call vote because it's a change of the ordinance.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of 7-0. I expect lemonade stands on every corner, very quickly, even through the winter. Next is Ordinance 23-10032022, adopting the Street Tree Sustainability Ordinance, the Staples Bill. This is a public hearing and first reading. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I got a motion from Counselor Walker, a second from Counselor Staples. Open this up to the public. Any members of the public would like to comment on an ordinance to plant trees? Anybody want to comment about cutting trees down? Mr. Griswold?
Just for the record, as a forester, I support both. I want to thank the council for bringing it to this point, especially Counselor Whiting and Counselor Staples for helping initiate this. We've been at this for a year, and it's, will be a positive for the city to adopt this motion in our 20th year of Tree City USA recognition. I will say that although it took us longer than some of us would have liked, we think the process was a positive one. We began this process with the old forest, Community Forest Subcommittee of the Conservation Commission about a year ago. We brought it forward to a workshop in January where it was generally supported. It was originally envisioned as a way to require developments to plant trees on their frontage. We get some feedback from the council, we get some feedback from the planning board, we get some feedback from the new sustainable, sustainability and natural resources management board, and we bent back to the table and developed a better mousetrap. This has the advantage of having both a process and a goal. The ordinance will require the city to collect data on the number of trees that are taken down and replanted, and a budget presented to you folks to replace them so that the community forest will be sustainable. One of, basically, we're looking for no net loss of street trees, and we're looking for one-for-one planting for trees that are taken down. There've been three in, on my corner just this year and four in the last year, so I do have an interest in it, but the general consensus in urban forestry at this point is that street trees are green infrastructure that have all kinds of values. So as a scientist, I'm glad that we came up with a process that worked. I'm glad that we took the time to do the process correctly and come up with a product that hopefully you will all continue to endorse as you have through the workshop process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, Counsel, Counselor Staples, Counselor Whiting, if you want to make a comment here before you move?
Sure, I mean, I could go on and on about the benefits of street trees, but I mean, I think we've talked about that at that workshop. I appreciate the council for being open to this and Dave Griswold for all the work that he's done on it, but I think we've, we've come up with a good ordinance and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, and I, I think besides the environmental benefit, there's also an economic benefit. I can remember as a kid going on Doctor's Row on Goth Street with all these impressive elm trees, and I would hazard a guess that the assessed value of properties on that street went down after all those trees came down, and now they're growing back slowly, different ones, but trees add value, not just environmentally, but economically.
This time, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Next is a resolve, that's 08-10032022, requesting increased state involvement for better outcomes for those unhoused. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gary, second by Counselor Moran. I'm going to read this in its entirety while people come up if they'd like to speak. Whereas, a number of community members who are unhoused is continuing to increase rapidly, and whereas, a current increase in housing costs, especially rental costs, are increasing at rates that are exceeding inflationary rates. And whereas, the housing cost increases are happening throughout the entire state of Maine. And whereas, individuals who are without housing are statistically going to be adversely impacted more by other contributing factors than the population as a whole. And whereas, these known contributing factors include domestic violence, behavioral health, substance abuse, human trafficking, and others. And whereas, the state of Maine, with federal COVID funds during the pandemic, provided temporary relief by utilizing hotels as a short-term solution. And whereas, those hotels are no longer available, leaving those in need without other viable alternatives. Whereas municipalities are required by the main law, by, by the main law, to provide housing assistance through the general assistance program. And whereas municipalities, including the City of Auburn, do not have the expertise or resources to provide additional services, which would be beneficial to many of the community members who are unhoused. And whereas, the housing crisis cannot be solved without uniform policies, state coordination, and cooperation between municipalities. And whereas, finding viable long-term solutions for the growing number of folks without housing will require participation and resources from outside of the municipality. And whereas, the federal government, through various policies, including but not limited to, those that impact asylum seekers are contributing to the challenge of serving the needs of the unhoused. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council and mayor of the City of Auburn, join with other municipal leaders in Maine to request the governor of the state of Maine, supported by legislative leadership, create a formal working group of both elected and professional staff to make improvements to the state and local responses for those who are unhoused. Anybody from the public like to speak on this resolve?
My name's Mike Gilligan. I live at 107 Newbury Street, Auburn, Maine, and it's wonderful that you're trying to get money from the state and you recognize it as a state problem. I just read somewhere there's like 33,000 families at risk of becoming homeless. These people aren't going away. You can't shove them in a corner somewhere. They need help. We need to encourage landlords to take the vouchers that you're giving people. It's not only people that are substance abuse people, it's people that have jobs. Personally, if I end up out of a home right now because I can't pay taxes or I have to have heart surgery or something because insurance stinks, I'll lose my home, and I won't have $4,000 to move into an apartment. It won't happen. I will be among the homeless. There are many people sitting here that will be too. We have to act. We have to do something. We have to have, come up with a comprehensive plan. We can't throw up our hands and say, we don't know what to do, it's somebody else who's got to help us. You can't look for a ring to be thrown in the water to rescue you from drowning. You have to help yourself, just like we want the people that are homeless to be able to help themselves. Right now, they feel so victimized that they are unwilling to come to these meetings because they do not feel like they will be heard. Their advocates feel like those people are so victimized that they don't want to come because they're not going to be heard. I'm challenging you to hear me, to respond, to organize however that may happen, even a little bit, to move the needle. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, any comments on this? But I would like, actually, before that, because we're debating this, there's some things to really talk about from a concert, comprehensive standpoint. I think we'll answer some of the questions posed by Mr. Mulligan, I believe it was, right?
Mr. Gilligan.
Gilligan.
Like Gilligan's Island on TV.
Now, I'm just going to call you Mr. Skipper. God, Mr. Gilligan. So Mr. Gilligan brought up a couple of good points. This resolution, really, Bitterford, Lewiston, some other municipalities are doing this as well, as part of their locally kind of mandated comprehensive plan when dealing with those that are unhoused. So we have several different initiatives, just remind the council, the ADU grant program, our rezoning efforts allowing multiple, or allowing ADUs, allowing infill properties that are not buildable right now to be built, so there is homes for folks. So there's a lot of little things that we have done, our GA assistance program, revising what the maximums are in order to provide even further assistance. A lot of the ARPA money we spent earlier on actually went to helping produce advocates to utilizing our home funds, our CDBG funds, in order to really assist with this problem. It's comprehensive. This resolution identifies it, acknowledges some of the initial funding sources from the state and the federal government, and encourages the governor not to just cut those off and let us handle everything, but to allow for a really strong methodology and a plan so that the unhoused, as a primary goal, can become housed. So that's this resolution in layman's terms. Is there any debate, or Mr. Manager, would you like to add to this as well? Okay, council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, fellow counselors, and Mr. Gilligan that came and those that are listening. I commend this resolution that, that what we're trying to do, but I agree with Mr. Gilligan. There are so many people, and no matter how many rents we put in, we can't get all the landlords to put their rents affordable so that those on a fixed income or don't make a whole lot of money can afford them, because right now, most rents are 12, 1400 dollars a month. We're forcing those that have lived here to move elsewhere. Even though we raised our general assistance limits on how much we can help people afford a place to go to, it's still not enough to compete in today's market. I think we, as a council, should try to work to try to figure more ways to be able to meet the need of those that are looking for housing. Our, our schools, we've got still a lot of couch surfing kids. They should be looked after too, and I think we need more things done to help accommodate them, to help them get the tools they need for a better education and hopefully a better life.
Is there any other debate on this? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote. Counselor Staples?
Yeah, I just, I just say that I support this resolution, but I also think that it's maybe the first of many steps I think that we need to take. I think there's a big problem here, and I think we need to do this and more.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed, none, passes unanimously, 7-0. Open this up to the last open session of the night. Any member of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. Members that would like to speak may do so by stepping up to the podium. Give us your name and address, and let me hear your comments to approximately three minutes. I see none. I'll close the last open session of the night. Bring it back down to reports. Mayor's report, we'll keep this fairly quick. Well, this past weekend was a very emotional weekend where we celebrated the life and memorialized the passing of Stephen Rupp from Ruppers, probably as far as everybody from the funeral home, as well as city leaders and just regular people, the largest funeral we've had in Lewiston, Auburn in generations. So it was very, it's a fitting tribute and a bon voyage to Steve. I represented the city at several events associated with that. Also Wednesday, we have our city, excuse me, school board meeting. Very important topic in the school board meeting will be the setting of the goals for the superintendent. I just want to let you all know that I remember the resolution that you passed unanimously. Counselor Moran, Counselor Hawes, myself have been working on dual enrollment, credits achieved. We've made some significant progress, but I do believe, according to that resolution and all the comments that you've given me since, and comments from the public, that encouraging the likelihood of our students graduating with at least 60 college credits from high school and/or trade certification is a lofty goal, and we'll be thinking about that, and I will be proposing that come Wednesday night when we have our final vote on our goals. That's everything I have for me. Any other reports, committee reports? None being, Counselor Walker, you have a committee report?
Yeah, I do have one. The, I'll start it by just saying, the age-friendly group has been active now for about four years, and, and working with Bell's Potato Farm, David and his brother and family. We have come up with a, I believe, something that really needed to be done a long time ago, but we finally was able to connect by working with City of Auburn, the CDGB department there for helping us to finance, to be able to give away potatoes. The Bell's family have had many, many tons of potatoes over the years that they did not put on the market to sell, feeling that they weren't big enough to make people, you know, happy at the stores or whatever. So by myself meeting with them and us as a group, trying to put our minds together and thought- and thoughts of what we could do, we have come up with a deal, and only because the city was willing to work with us, that we have purchased approximately 15 tons of potatoes from Bell's Farm, which will take us mostly through the winter, and what we're trying to do is give these potatoes in five-pound bags to senior citizens that are in need or feel that they want to come to Pettingill Park, and they can call ahead if they want to, I'll make sure there are potatoes there. Like today, for instance, we brought two ton of potatoes down there, and we gave away half of them today. So that's about 45-pound bags, and I gave half of them out within two hours. So we're just trying to get the word out there. We're trying to help out people that may have some need. I know a five-pound bag of potatoes don't sound like much, but that's approximately $5 that we've saved you from going to the store to spend it. They are new potatoes, they were just dug in the last couple of weeks, and we will have plenty more, so if you'd like to call Jamie at the Recreation Department, as well as the senior center, 333-6601, extension 2108, we would be glad to save a five-pound bag of potatoes or even 10 pounds if your family's a good-sized family and you have use for it. We would love to help you, and don't be afraid to come on down and just get some. Thank you.
Mr. Manager? Nothing covered, okay? With that said, I am not going to call for adjournment. I am going to move into executive session, a continuation of item D on tonight's agenda. So this time, I'd like to ask the public, thank you very much, have a great night. We'll have the continuation of this, and then we'll have a second and final executive session with no action to follow, then we'll adjourn.